Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meetings of the Housing Successors, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Protemzamora.
Here.
And Mayor Rounds.
Here. At this time, I'd like to call upon Cindy Jarvis to lead us in today's invocation.
Come to me, all who are weary and burdened, and I will give you rest. Matthew 11:28. God's word tells us to seek Him in hard times. We often hear the verse in Matthew, but when it truly is difficult, do we stop and seek Him or lean on our own understanding? This is the true question. Over Memorial Day weekend, one of our teachers tragically lost her husband just doing yard work at the age of 54. And sometimes, all's we can do is pray. And all's we can do is be there in support. And so, it's very important for us to really think about prayer. And praying for one another when times are really, really difficult. So, let's pray right now. Heavenly Father, we come to you with humble hearts. As we're reminded to seek you first, allow us to share your love with those around us that need prayer and help us not to be apprehensive to step in when needed. Thank you for allowing us to stand in the gap for others and pray. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Remind, standing, please. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Martin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Introductions. I'd like to introduce the following representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. First, we have Lena Ariza from CBM Real Estate and Home Loans. Ross Guile, Digical Web Designs. Mark Gutierrez, Gilmore Automotive Group. Nico Schubin, Servwell Disposal and Recycling. Wendy Meter Kurt, Tangram Interiors. Carlos Garado, Farmers and Merchant Bank. And Kathy Fink, former and retired Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce CEO. Presentations. Recognition of Santa Fe Springs Women's Club. I'd like to call upon Women's Club member Frances Carvahal.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Frances Carvahal, and I'm the president of the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club. Tonight, we're here to recognize three individual members of our club who were honored by State Senator Susan Rubio. The three women are Delia Chavez for Kindness Angel. Gloria Magami for Club Member of the Year. And Lupe Licencia for Citizen of the Year. And unfortunately, she's not here. The district is comprised of over 20 cities. The Santa Fe and Santa Fe Springs placed in all five award categories. First place that Santa Fe Springs Women's Club received civic engagement. First place, education and libraries. First place, fundraising. First place, domestic and sexual violence awareness and prevention. And the fifth award, second place, arts and culture. We were also recognized with the certificate of recognition that was given by the district to our club for all of these awards. This is the first time in our history of the Women's Club for Santa Fe Springs to place in all five awards, sweeping everything. So, thank you so much for that. I also want to recognize our members, who, of course, without them, they give tireless hours. And thankful to the city for helping us and always backing us in our projects. And I'd like to first bring upon our kindness angel, Delia Chavez. Jessica Rivera was our secretary. Lisa Zapata, co-chair Fashion Show. Diana Marquez, co-chair for our Crafts Department. Gloria Magami, Vice President. Peggy Redumis, Treasurer. We have a few more members, but like I said, everybody seems to be coming down with that horrible cough. These ladies and gentlemen here are your 2024-25 winners, my beautiful team, these wonderful members that just stole everything at the conference. And we are also here to thank you. As you know, fundraising doesn't come easy. We are here to personally invite you to our next fundraiser, which is our fashion show, August 10. And that'll be at Town Center Hall. And we have flyers and ladies, if you can lay the City Council. Tickets are now on sale. See any one of our members. This fundraiser, all the monies go to our youth. With the help of our City Council and our past representative, Annette Rodriguez, as well, this committee has raised well over $100,000 in scholarships. We also have been recognized by, sorry, I have all these certificates here, by California State Senator Susan Rubio. We have Delia's, but there's another one here. Okay. Certificate of Recognition presented to the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club for Senator Barb Archuleta's office. So, that was given to us tonight, along with Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco. So, ladies and gentlemen, these are your Women's Club members. These are the ones who are constantly out there with the help of our City Council fundraising for the youth of our city. And we thank you. We again are just so proud, I am, of these women. A first again in all these years, that we swept everything, and we couldn't do it without the backing of our council. And we appreciate you all. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah. I know you have some family members, too.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And then, any of the family members want to join in?
Yeah. Do you want to do individual with your family? If you have some family members?
Yeah. You guys are doing the whole family, yeah.
Hi, guys. Hi, guys. Good to see you.
How you doing? Of course, I am.
Not at all.
How you doing? Good to see you.
Wait, you can do another one?
Okay.
Look forward.
Look forward.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
Everybody else is working until seven.
At least you have somebody, though, right? There you go.
Here we go.
Ready? Three, two, one. All right.
Granddaughter again.
Yes.
That's it? Did you want to say anything? No? Next, we have budget presentation, capital improvement projects, and special funds. I'd like to call upon Director of Finance Julio Morales.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's good to see you all. Apparently, someone doesn't know I'm making a presentation. So, today, we're doing our second budget workshop. It's important to note that today, we're going to go over the water fund and special revenue funds. So, most people, when they think about a budget, they think about the general fund, which is the majority of the money that goes into the fund. It deals with most of the operating costs. However, we have the fortune of having a number of special revenue funds, transportation-related funds, funds like CDBG, which are often restricted to specific purposes. And what they often require is that you set aside monies in a fund or its own separate bank account. So, they really have to be accounted for differently. They cannot be commingled typically with your other funds or require, at least for you, to account for those. So, if I may, I'm going to go over a real quick summary. Hello? Am I going in the wrong direction?
Yes.
Just testing, because it's not really cooperating. Okay. So, this is the point where I'm, yeah, I'm technologically challenged. There we go. Eight. Go back. If you recall last time, I'm not certain what happened, but there was a gremlin in the system. If you remember, there was a slide that missed that $3.1 million step increase. If you recall, at that point, I was like, whoa, hold the presses. So, we didn't find the gremlin, but we did find the correct slide, and we just wanted to go back and tell you. I think it's important to know. So, we had that starting point of $94.5 million in the general fund. And then, we had talked about the revenue that were coming in, in our starting budget. So, we had about $2.4 million from that starting budget. And then, we had all the requests that people had. And those requests totaled $3.9 million. So, if you take the $2.4 and $3.9 million, we had talked about having to come up with a $1.5 million differential to fund the difference in the general fund. Now, remember that $1.5 million number, because the special revenue fund helps finance or fund a great deal of the operations of some of these programs. So, in all full transparency and understanding, you see that difference, if you remember that $1.5 million number? I'm going to go over these, there's a lot, but these are all the individual funds. And the thing that you really should take a look at is that number in yellow right there, which is $2.3 million. So, in essence, that is transfers to the general fund. The gas tax has $200,000, Prop A has $480,000, Prop C $274,000, Art in Public Places $842, supplemental law enforcement, public agency augmentation, landscape lighting district, all those total $2.3, $2.4 million. So, remember that number that I was talking about, the $1.5 million differential. You have that difference made up that we said we'd come back to you later and then some. So, we have a little bit extra to kind of work with. So, the general fund is taken care of from some of these special revenue funds. That's the good point. Now, what we now have to talk about is all these different special revenue funds. You can see how much you have in annual revenue, so about $7 million in annual grant monies. And then, we had a starting balance of $19 million. Now, note, we allocate a great deal of our capital cost to these special revenue funds, so you have to take a look at where we are at the end. So, we've looked at the monies that are transferred to the general fund, which is about $2 million. We looked at things that are charged directly to that individual fund. Probably the best example would be waste management, where you see that we had $3 million a year, or I should start with, we had a $5.3 million balance from prior years. We expect to receive $3,125,000 in various frees from our waste haulers, post-commercial residential, oh, sorry, in this case. And then, we had $1 million in direct charges and $1 million or so in salary. So, that's $2 million that come out. And then, we end up with a net balance. So, there's a bit you could transfer back. So, if you do that for each and every one of these funds, you see where our balance is, and you note that we have a net balance of $9 million in monies remaining. That's important, because those monies are restricted, and most of which, some operating costs, the most of which are capital costs. And we'll come back and go over the CIP later on today, but also go over this notion of how to fund projects. Is that, do you have a question, Councilwoman? Okay.
And Julio, if I may, because we do have our county friends in the audience, I do want to mention that 2210, the last row on the spreadsheet, Measure A homelessness, that's the item that's on the agenda tonight for a local solutions funding that is going to be handled through police services for $554,419. I think to the point that we've been making, no disrespect to the county, do a fantastic job, but this is part of the Measure H funding that went away. The City of Santa Fe Springs contributed about $16 million a year towards the measure. In those years, we got zero in return. This measure, this new measure's coming in, we're probably kicking in about another eight million is coming from the tax base of Santa Fe Springs, and we're getting $554,000. That's fantastic to what we were getting before, which was zero. But just to highlight an example of funds that we kick in, eight million dollars that are kicked in from this community, and we get $500,000 in return. And we've been talking about a new tax measure and wanting to keep those taxes local so that we control the funding and it gets spent. But we do appreciate the funding and the direct funding, but I just wanted to highlight an example of some of the challenges cities like us have with funding and making sure we have funding to take care of a lot of these programs and a lot of these issues that are happening in our community.
Thanks, Renee. I think that's an important point. I don't know if it's been exactly presented this way, but I think it's the most simple way to understand the starting balance, how much you have in revenue, how much gets transferred to the general fund, what you charge directly to the fund, and what's left over. Now, it's important, because you'll see right there, there's a certain amount charged for capital funds for certain funds. So, some funds are more operating-based for capital projects, for example, Measure W. Now, James and Renee came back prior last year with a number of projects that were already approved last year, and some of this is embedded in the carryover. So, you'll see Prop C, Measure R, Measure M, those were already approved in the road contracts and construction that's going on right now. So, we're expecting those monies to be used up, but really, that was something you did in the last budget year. But you kind of have a carryover, because it wasn't all spent in this year. So, we're expecting to spend the full balance this fiscal year. And more importantly, it was already approved and authorized last year. So, you're always trying to keep a running balance, understanding that some of these carry over, and understand that you get set revenues, but you have capital cost. So, once again, $2.3 million in a transfer back to the general fund to help eliminate that shortfall that you had in operating cost. You had some direct charges, and then, you had $12.7 million in capital projects that you are funding or will have funded in a variety of different projects at the end of this year. Now, note, we've already started a significant number of these. So, there's a little bit of a timing issue, but I'm expecting, especially in Measure W, Prop R, sorry, Measure R, Measure M, and Prop C that will be used up, the balances will be used up. That doesn't mean, remember, that we won't get monies the next year. It's just that backlog of projects that we had in the past will be used up. And I think that was one of the objectives that James had last year.
And Julio, just for purposes of transparency, the item 2402, which is the second, the first two lines, 2401 and 2402 gas tax, that's funding that we get from the state, and that money we use for maintenance of effort, correct?
Absolutely.
So, basically, instead of using that money to use for roads, we use it as a maintenance effort for M&amp;O, for our road crews to go out and fix roads and, you know, fix potholes. We don't get a whole lot of it. The revenue that we get per year is very, very limited, but it does help.
I think that's a really good point to make, Renee. When you take a look at the revenue, for example, for gas tax, which isn't a lot, it's a million dollars. And by the way, a lot of cities, they treat it one of two ways. Either you take gas tax in a fund, and they transfer all of it back, or they account for it in a separate fund and then transfer some of the balances. So, that's very common. But when you look at your transit capital programs, and you look at how much revenue you got this year, which is 1.5 million, and the city to, is Whittier to the north of us?
To the east of us.
East, sorry, northeast-ish. They get about seven or eight million dollars, I think, in all these transactions.
Well, I'll give an example. The City of Montebello is roughly about four to six million, and they are a lot smaller in road area than we are. We have more square roads, miles of roads than most cities around us.
And the issue is they're population-based, and they really aren't road-based. And even then, the amount of roads that you have have nothing to do with the amount of road traffic that you have, which is substantial. So, we hope sometime in the future to address that at some other level, but unfortunately, the formula works against us as a city, and that's unfortunate.
And I do want to give kudos to the chamber and the businesses that helped us with Measure SFS, because it is filling a gap that we just couldn't afford to pave with the funding that we had and with our M&amp;O.
Funds like CDBG, which are often restricted to specific purposes. And what they often require is that you set aside monies in a fund or its own separate bank account. So they really have to be accounted for differently. They cannot be commingled typically with your other funds, or require at least for you to account for those. So if I may, I'm going to go over a real quick summary. Am I going in the wrong direction?
Yes.
Just testing, because it's not really cooperating. So this is the point where I'm, yeah, I'm technologically challenged. There we go. Eight. Go back. If you recall last time, I'm not certain what happened, but there was a gremlin in the system. If you remember, there was a slide that missed that $3.1 million step increase. If you recall, at that point, I was like, whoa, hold the presses. So we didn't find the gremlin, but we did find the correct slide, and we just wanted to go back and tell you. I think it's important to know. So we had that starting point of $94.5 million in the general fund. And then we had talked about the revenue that were coming in and our starting budget. So we had about $2.4 million from that starting budget, and then we had all the requests that people had. And those requests totaled $3.9 million. So if you take the $2.4 and $3.9 million, we had talked about having to come up with a $1.5 million differential to fund the difference in the general fund. Now, remember that $1.5 million number, because the special revenue fund helps finance or fund a great deal of the operations of some of these programs. So in all full transparency and understanding, you see that difference if you remember that I'm going to go over these, there's a lot, but these are all the individual funds. And the thing that you really should take a look at is that number in yellow right there, which is $2.3 million. So in essence, that is transfers to the general fund. The gas tax has 200,000, Prop A has 480,000, Prop C, 274,000, Art in Public Places, 842, supplemental law enforcement, public agency augmentation, landscape lighting district, all those total 2.3, 2.4 million dollars. So remember that number that I was talking about, the 1.5 million differential. You have that difference made up that we said we'd come back to you later and then some. So we have a little bit extra kind of work. So the general fund is taken care of from some of these special revenue funds. That's the good point. Now, what we now have to talk about is all these different special revenue funds. You can see how much you have in annual revenue, so about $7 million in annual grant monies. And then we had a starting balance of $19 million. Now note, we allocate a great deal of our capital costs to these special revenue funds, so you have to take a look at where we are at the end. So we've looked at the monies that are transferred to the general fund, which is about $2 million. We looked at things that are charged directly to that individual fund. Probably the best example would be waste management, where you see that we had $3 million a year, or I should start with, we had a $5.3 million balance from prior years. We expect to receive $3,125,000 in various frees from our waste haulers, post-commercial residential, oh, sorry, in this case. And then we had $1 million in direct charges and $1 million or so in salary. So that's $2 million that come out. And then we end up with a net balance. So there's a bit you could transfer back. So if you do that for each and every one of these funds, you see where our balance is, and you note that we have a net balance of $9 million in monies remaining. That's important, because those monies are restricted, and most of which, some operating costs, the most of which are capital costs. And we'll come back and go over the CIP later on today, but also go over this notion of how to fund projects. Is that, is, do you have a question, Councilwoman? Okay.
And Julio, if I may, because we do have our county friends in the audience, I do want to mention that 2210, the last, the last row on the spreadsheet, Measure A homelessness, that's the item that's on the agenda tonight for a local solutions funding that is going to be handled through police services for $554,419. I think to the point that we've been making, no disrespect to the county, they do a fantastic job, but this is part of the Measure H funding that went away. The city of Santa Fe Springs contributed about $16 million a year towards the measure. In those years, we got zero in return. This measure, this new measure's coming in, we're probably kicking in about another eight million is coming from the tax base of Santa Fe Springs, and we're getting $554,000. That's fantastic to what we were getting before, which was zero. But just to highlight an example of funds that we kick in, eight million dollars that are kicked in from this community, and we get 500,000 in return. And we've been talking about a new tax measure and wanting to keep those taxes local, so that we control the funding and it gets spent in Santa Fe Springs. But we do appreciate the funding and the direct funding, but it just, I just wanted to highlight an example of some of the challenges cities like us have with funding and making sure we have funding to take care of a lot of these programs and a lot of these issues that are happening in our community.
Thanks, Renee. I think that's an important point. I don't know if it has been exactly presented this way, but I think it's the most simple way to understand the starting balance, how much you have in revenue, how much gets transferred to the general fund, what you charge directly to the fund, and what's left over. Now, it's important, because you'll see right there, there's a certain amount charged for capital funds for certain funds. So some funds are more operating based for capital projects. For example, Measure W. Now, James and Renee came back prior last year with a number of projects that were already approved last year, and some of this is embedded in the carryover. So you'll see Prop C, Measure R, Measure M, those were already approved in the road contracts and construction that's going on right now. So we're expecting those monies to be used up, but really, that was something you did in last budget year. But you kind of have a carryover, because it wasn't all spent in this year. So we're spending, expecting to spend the full balance this fiscal year. And more importantly, it was already approved and authorized last year. So you're always trying to keep a running balance, understanding that some of these carry over, and understand that you get set revenues, but you have capital cost. So, once again, $2.3 million in a transfer back to the general fund to help eliminate that shortfall that you had in operating costs. You had some direct charges, and then you had $12.7 million in capital projects that you are funding or will have funded in a variety of different projects at the end of this year. Now, note, we've already started a significant number of these. So there's a little bit of a timing issue, but I'm expecting, especially in Measure W, Prop R, sorry, Measure, Measure R, Measure M, and Prop C that will be used up, the balances will be used up. That doesn't mean, remember, that we won't get monies the next year. It's just that backlog of projects that we had in the past will be used up. And I think that was one of the objectives that James had last year.
And Julio, just for purposes of transparency, the item 2402, which is the second, the first two lines, 2401 and 2402 gas tax, that's funding that we get from the state, and that money we use for maintenance of effort, correct?
Absolutely.
So basically, instead of using that money to use for roads, we use it as a maintenance effort for MNO, for our road crews to go out and fix roads and, you know, fix potholes. We don't get a whole lot of it. The revenue that we get per year is very, very limited.
I think that's a really good point to make, Renee. When you take a look at the revenue, for example, for gas tax, which isn't a lot, it's a million dollars. And by the way, a lot of cities, they treat it one of two ways. Either you take gas tax in a fund and they transfer all of it back, or they account for it in a separate fund and then transfer some of the balances. So that's very common. But when you look at your transit capital programs, and you look at how much revenue you got this year, which is 1.5 million, and the city to, is Whittier to the north of us?
To the east of us.
East, sorry, northeast-ish. They get about seven or eight million dollars, I think, in all these.
Well, I'll give an example. The city of Montebello is roughly about four to six million, and they are a lot smaller in road area than we are. We have more square roads, miles of roads than most cities around us.
And the issue is they're population-based, and they really aren't road-based. And even then, the amount of roads that you have have nothing to do with the amount of road traffic that you have, which is substantial. So we hope sometime in the future to address that at some other level, but unfortunately, the formula works against us as a city, and that's unfortunate.
And I do want to give kudos to the chamber and the businesses that helped us with Measure SFS, because it is filling a gap that we just couldn't afford to pave with the funding that we had and with our MNO. And now we have direct funding through a tax that the businesses are paying for to do all the street work, which I'm proud to report will happen at the next meeting, will be the first project that will come before council for funding.
Also, when you're talking, I mean, they're bringing up about the state level. It's the state level, and of course, the county level that wants our money. I mean, you have to understand that, you know, when they do it by population-based, they're not doing it by business population-based, they're doing it by residential. And this is why other cities around us take that money, or they, you know, it just makes it a lot easier. And I know that time in and time out, that most of us are not aware about, where the county and the state, they're always in conjunction, always in talks, trying to figure out other means to take our money. And so we always have to do our part to counteract those things. So this is why, when you see the Measure SFS and you saw it go into a bond, it went into a bond, so we can actually act on it now and use those funds. So you already see work being done now. So when potentially, when there's the next measure that comes out, it'll be bonded, and then from there, you know, hopefully, the process will be that the money starts to be mobilized as soon as possible for our residents and our constituents, and of course, our business residents also.
We did not include Measure SFS in this report, as you know, because they're not monies that you deposit there. It's $30 million held with a bond trustee, it'll be drawn, it's a separate account. As you know, there's debt service being paid for a portion of that, about $2.25 million. The rest will be for ongoing costs, which James has already started some of those, absolutely. I do, that's the argument we're making all the time, that you don't get your fair share, given the road traffic that you have. And it's a downside to the population, so it's a unintended consequence of a population-based format.
And when you're looking at, if you would like just to see the street Albertis right here from Telegraph going, you know, to where Juanita's grandma's, I mean, Juanita's mom's house is at, right, Dunny? I mean, just that road alone, if we were to pay, if we were to do it repair, it'd roughly be about a million dollars. So this is why when, you know, our city manager's explaining about the 200,000 that we get and the gas tax, you know, we use it for other means of smaller things, because guess what? We're not going to be able to dig up a road with 200,000, especially when it's just from there to there. So we have about roughly $110 million worth of road repairs here in the city of Santa Fe Springs.
So having said that point, one of the things James has been doing is trying to use all the leftover balance as soon as possible, before the costs end up being significantly greater. But right now, we don't have about $9 million in reserves left over that we will work on allocating in our next CIP and next round of, I think, Renee, that's like another item to be discussed. So I wanted to reemphasize that the city is in a strong financial position. These are our projected reserve levels as of May. And I think it's important to understand that that same $9.1 million that we had here in that balance, 9132, those are what I call restricted reserves. So when we had CIP before, I think we had listed it as 21. At the last meeting, I wanted to emphasize that half of that money is restricted to those, the parameters set by that grant program. Not a bad thing, just understand that you can't use it exactly the way you want in every case for this year. So we have to abide by the rules. But otherwise, we're in a fairly strong position. I would say we probably could use more in the risk management fund, but overall, we have about $100 million of the reserves, which is really good.
And I do want to highlight for the council, this renovation and replacement account. This is something new that we started two years ago. We've already accounted $250,000 in this account. These are funds that we get from reservations and rentals. These are funds that are going to go back to putting back into Clark Estate, back into Town Hall Center, so that our event centers always look great and fantastic all the time. Now we have direct funding that we are allocating from those funds back into this fund. So when Gus and folks are making improvements to those facilities, we have direct funds to account for those every year. So every year, we'll be putting money back into painting, patching, making those places look elaborate as they were from day one.
So I'm going to talk about the underlying economics behind the water utility. And unfortunately, we've had some issues that we struggled with in going over the computer system. But regardless of those issues, which we hope to address, and know this has impacted the community, and we're trying to address that, there are some fundamental economic drivers that we really have to understand about water and any water agency. So this is the department budget for next year. And you'll see, one of the things that we had done in some difficulty is there weren't complete overhead charges, but the biggest component of the entire budget are water purchases. So what most people don't know is we purchase the majority of our water from Metropolitan Water District, which every water district or city will call it imported water. And the cost of imported water is about $1,300 an acre foot. We do purchase some of that water from Whittier, and I'll go into the next slide as well, which is much cheaper. But that, as you see over time, has increased our cost of production. All else being equal, we're going to have some general inflationary costs, but the cost of purchased water keeps on going up for two reasons. One, the cost goes up, and two, the amount that we use as a percentage continues to go up.
And just for education purpose, the reason why we have to import water is because all of the source that we have where we pump water from the ground, we have wells, four wells that are all out of commission, they're all contaminated. And we would, we're looking for funding and cost to be able to fund those and get potentially grant dollars to clean that up. But we're talking anywhere from three to five million dollars per well times four.
We also have the Omega Plume, too.
And we have the Omega Plume. So there, so below us, there's contaminants as we pump water out, those contaminants come out, and they do not meet state standards, so we cannot distribute that water. So we have to import it through Metropolitan Water District.
In essence, we have to clean the water, find a way to deal with these working wells. It's not the well itself, but it's literally cleaning the water so it's able to be used by individuals. So if we had working wells, our costs would go down, and we are working towards that. I know that James has started these preliminary studies. The downside to that is it takes a bit of time and some money. And unfortunately, time works against us as far as our expenses go through. So once again, the cost of water, let's just say you have a budget of 16 million or so in some sense, or $60 million in revenue, 50% of your cost, actually, let's just say 18, is really the cost of imported water, right? And most of that is Metropolitan Water District and a little bit in Whittier. Now, oops, wrong way, how do I go back? There we go. Here's the problem. The council took action in 2020 through 2023 and had rate increases of 9.5, 9.5 in 6.5%, which are large. But the truth be told, those costs did not keep pace necessarily with all the costs associated with the cost of water. Regardless of the costs that you had there, which didn't have all the CIP costs, which James can tell you more, right? We talked about the wells, that's one component. We didn't talk about the underlying pipes, which is another element. Regardless of having a rate increase for those long-term fixed costs, the most important thing is keeping pace with the actual cost of water. If you're running a lemonade stand and the cost of lemonade is $2 a lemon, and you're only charging a buck ninety, you're going to have a hard time as an enterprise. And it's called an enterprise fund. It's to be run as a business. So I'm not making any recommendations, but rather stating facts for you to understand how this is. So our rate lasting, a rate increase last took place in 2023. Since then, this is the increase in the rates of imported water. Now, even if we cut that in half, we're behind, right? Because half of our budget is the cost of imported water. Metropolitan Water District increased their rates 2.7% in '24 relative to our rates. Next year, they proposed a 10% increase and another 10% increase. And if I were a gambling man, and Renee knows I hate gambling, but I would bet very strongly that Met Water will continue to raise rates, because that's what's been known. I've been a water bond guy for a couple decades, and this is what they've been doing for the longest time. I do not anticipate the cost of imported water slowing down or going down. That will be continued increasing trend, and our problem is we'll continue to fall behind. Half of our budget is the cost of water, and if we don't raise rates just at minimum to keep pace with that, we're going to have a difficult time. So having said that, I'm going to go back. Our revenues are about 16 million projected. We have pretty significant costs that we believe, so we're going to run a deficit, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't know how much we're going to have in reserves, because we're behind. But part of this is you see the cost of imported water, which is a million dollars more from one year to the next, which I can't do anything about. This is like the cost of gasoline, if I may. It just goes up. You can't do much about it if you're a driver, right? So that keeps on going up. There are a couple of things I've done to reduce, like we used to have these interfund transfers, which is the least. We have not done that this year in the budget, because frankly, I'm not going to make the deficit any larger. We need to maintain the reserves as much as possible. So this would potentially look worse. We'll look to see, we did save a few hundred thousand dollars after the, in billing and collection, which you know that was the computer system, so we saved a few hundred thousand dollars this year, which we don't have to repeat, but still, we have other inflationary costs and mostly these components. So in summary, we are in an unenviable position of running a structural deficit in the water department, and cannot easily fix that without addressing the fundamental rate structure. Having said that, I would recommend that we pass this budget, because we have to. We have to continue to provide water to residents, but know that we have to come up with long-term improvement financial solutions. Any questions?
Could you go back to the first slide?
Did I hear the first slide or the slide?
Oh, not, well, go on to the next one. Done. On item, a fund 2203. Why is it so, what does that consist of? It's the...
Supplemental law enforcement.
Yeah.
That's the starting balance. So that's what we had remaining from last year. In fact, I think it was $114,000. We used $110,000 of that. It goes back to the contract for the police services contract. We always get a minimum of $100,000 for the guidelines, sometimes it's a little bit more. So it's important, when you look at public safety augmentation and supplemental law enforcement, and see where it says grant award and then transfer to the general fund. So we get those revenues, and they go back to the police contracts effectively. So it's just a revenue that you get, but we have to keep them separately accounted for, because that's the requirements when we get the money.
It could potentially be a grant that we got, like a JAG grant or something that we get, and then...
But in those cases, we get them each year, Councilwoman, but I have to account for them separately.
I can stop. We're under the law.
Well, that was the starting balance, and you see that we just used the 100,000 and keeps a starting balance.
Yeah, it's a grant, a grant that we receive.
Matt Stumpf.
Note, another one, the landscape lighting district. I don't know if you know, the budget for that is like $900,000 for all our streetlights, but we've always maintained the fee that we charge is $185,000. That will come up at the next council meeting. So there's some things that the council has decided, per policy, to continue to subsidize at a certain rate, whether we continue to do things. So the rest of the general fund pays for that. So in a way that you have to take a look at it, is the general fund gets $185,000 to help offset some of the costs, but it pays the rest of the landscaping and lighting from its own general fund cost. I'd be more than happy to address all of these, but I'm going to go back one last thing. Street and road maintenance, gas tax, those are a tax that you have and you have to use for ongoing road repair and other operating costs. The transit capital program, Prop A primarily is one that we have the ride service that we provide to seniors and other events. Prop C is very similar and transit-oriented. Measure R and Measure M are transit programs usually for road repairs. Those monies all come from the MTA and come from half-cent sales tax allocations. Okay? Now, we, the 482, all that 1.5 million dollars, which I told, like, Whittier's going to get multiples more than we do, excuse me, comes by formula every year. So we know what that revenue amount is. There's no guessing on those. We know what that one, those four I do know. Measure W is stormwater quality, which we've been, have some ongoing projects. And if you notice that we said the capital projects, they have some ongoing projects. Public Works is going to spend the remaining balance in that year. So I'm not certain what the next year's allocation is, so I have to confirm that. So I may have to come back and adjust on the 17th, once I get that exact number. CDBG is formulaic, where, so we get that amount, if you know, I think, the teen program and the other construction programs. So there are various programs. If you'd like, and if I can come back on the 17th and give you a little detail for each one of those funds, as a little cheat sheet.
And Santa Fe Springs for CDBG is not a direct recipient.
That is correct.
We actually get it through the county. Most cities have a direct allotment from the feds. We get it indirectly from the state.
Your, what we call an unentitlement, not entitlement city, entitlement cities get it by a formula or population, but due to our size, we don't get that much. AQMD, we have a very small amount, as you know, those are the type of things sometimes play for, in the past, it paid for the car charging stations, electric vehicles, or those type of gas. Heritage Springs Street, that is supposed to pay for street roads and repairs. We didn't budget anything this year for that. Art in Public Places, which you're very familiar with, some of that is paying for a number of projects that go in community services account, that were presented during the community services budget. The Heritage Foundation, I'm sorry, Heritage Endowment, you only can keep the interest earnings on that, so we just see what the interest earnings are at the end of the year and figure that out. It's going to be a few thousand dollars. Transportation Center, we didn't budget that. I didn't know what we, normally, we don't budget an amount, so some of these are just fund balances. We'd gone over supplemental law enforcement, landscape lighting district, and lastly, waste management, which is just the fees that you get from your waste haulers. And Renee mentioned previously, 2210, Measure A homelessness. I know that there's one other Measure A that Gus will talk about later in some other point, but that's not an ongoing program, it's a one-time program. So this gets to be difficult, and I apologize for this. Sometimes there's a one-time grant program that Renee mentioned. Some are ongoing, you have these running balances, but we're trying to get you to do a couple of numbers. One, the general fund is going back, or they're transferring back to the general fund a couple of million dollars, so that, that equals out your structural deficit we had talked about, our funding shortfall. Two, you have some leftover balances that we'll talk about in the CIP. And the good news is that you get a certain amount every year. If you see those revenues right there, you get four or five million dollars a year, at least each year, I'm sorry, 7.5 in those that are transferred. So it's a substantial amount of money that you get every year, but you have to be wary of the funding balance, and we've been using that to make sure. And lastly, it's kind of a last in, first out. You have to use the money. You can't have, CDBG is what, four or five years? If you don't use it, you lose it. So there are a lot of rules applied to this. I just wanted you to understand kind of the whole budget, and then we talked about the water budget, right? But most of these are restricted. I cannot take money from AQMD and use it for road repairs. They want certain assets that can be done. And vice versa, you can't buy cars with Measure M, for example. Any further questions on this?
So Mayor and Council, we will, after this presentation, we will start preparing the budget books. Soon as those are ready, we will meet with you. I think there's some meetings set up to kind of go over the final product with you before it becomes the council, at the next council meeting for adoption.
It will be in the same format that you saw last year, so hopefully, be easy to From that, we wanted to quickly go over the capital improvement program, a quick overview, and I promise it will not be as detailed, but a quick overview. And if you'd like, we can go as much detail. Where's James? Oh, there you go. On deck. So James, you want to take this in here?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, members of the Council. I'm going to go over in a little bit more detail than you saw. You remember the slide from our first budget study session. I have a little bit more detail of what is actually, remains in the current CIP program. Just a broad stroke of the funding sources, and then I'd be happy to take any questions. So what you see here is I call our snapshot of where we are with our capital improvement program, and I call it a snapshot, because CIP is a continuously changing program. Every time I come to the council for actions on particular projects, we're refining costs, because the original CIP was based on projected budgets for projects. So when I come for actions for awarding contracts, those are actual costs, and we continuously update the numbers in this, in this program. Aside from that, you see there that there's additional projects. So in 2022, the council adopted a three-year CIP program that consisted of 41 projects for a total of about 27.8 million from the various sources. As we've been delivering that program, more projects have been added and quite a few. A lot of them are smaller projects, we still track them as part of the CIP. So a total of 43 projects have been added during that time for an additional projected cost of 18.8 million. cost of 18.8 million. So all in all, where we are in the snapshot is we're about halfway through those 40, those 84 projects. You see, we've completed about almost 19 million dollars of that program, but we still have about 40 projects that total 27.6 million. And the buckets that that funding comes from is the CIP reserve, which is essentially general fund or UUT. There's some redevelopment bond proceeds that we're still spending. The street resurfacing fee, that's a fee we collect, I believe, in our entitlement of projects. And then the other is the grants and the local returns that you saw, the Measure R, Measure M, Prop C, and gas tax that goes into the program. So if we look in a little bit more detail, you'll see, it's a little bit hard to read, but these are the projects that are currently in, in design. And if you can read any of those and have any particular questions, I can certainly answer that, but I just wanted to, at least for the record, go over which projects are actually still in the program that remain to be delivered. Again, these are in design and that's a total of about 3.3 million, 3.1 million. These are currently under construction. Some of them are very near the end of construction, but that totals 10 million. And then I'll call these future projects. These are projects that we're either soliciting, designing, very beginning stages of these projects. There's also some regional projects there that you see that we track. Don't necessarily have a dollar value to them, but they do take staff time, so we track them as part of our CIP. That includes our coordination with the light rail from Metro, that's a gold line extension, high-speed rail that takes some time to coordinate. And then we have, for instance, the Slosen is still on here. We're still working with the federal government to free up the monies that we got for, for Slosen that unfortunately got, has gotten stuck in some of the federal bureaucracy, especially nowadays. So we're still, we're still waiting to get that money and that's why it's still tracked as a future project. And those future projects totaled to 3.9, which brings you back to that 27.6 figure. And I will say there are a couple of projects here that, again, the program's evolving that they're not added yet. For instance, the Plaza project is not on here yet. When we get better estimates for that, we'll be coming to the council for action on that project and then that'll formally get added to, to the program. So that gives you an idea of where we are. I think probably in the next year is a good time to start talking about developing the next three to five-year CIP program. By then, I think that'll give our new finance director a chance to catch up with projections on, on all the revenue sources that go into that program. We'll be in a good position to start looking at what the council sees as, what that next three-year, three to five-year program includes. What you see here is probably going to take another two years to deliver. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And James, some of the projects that you saw on that, some of, well, some of the projects have been on there for a number of years, but as time evolves, we have emergencies. Some of those projects go back a year or so because we have to fund current emergency projects under the capital improvement. So it's always evolving. I mean, every year there's emergencies that come up and...
Absolutely, Mayor. I'll give you all a good example. We had flooding a year and a half ago where our, our police facility got flooded and we had to pivot and spend close to a million dollars of funding to fix the drainage and fix the flooring, fix all, everything that, that got destroyed. So that's a good example of a project that wasn't planned, but we had to pivot and fix immediately.
And as, as I stated, also the funding sources sometimes dictate those, those schedules, you know, especially grants. Sometimes grants take a while to, to get that money freed up from whatever the grant, whoever the granting agency is and we adjust the schedules accordingly.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julio, thank you.
That concludes our presentation. If there's no questions, we're ready to move on.
Mr. Bobadilla, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You'll have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Yes, Mayor. First, I'd like to call upon Kathy Fink and Carlos Gallardo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and city staff. It is my great, great pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce. As president of the chamber, I am honored to introduce someone who I believe will continue the chamber's strong legacy of partnership with the city and our business community with energy, experience, and a fresh perspective. John has advanced education in chamber management and joins us from Chamber West, Chamber of Commerce in West Valley City, Utah, where he served as a business development director. He brings with him not only a strong background in chamber operations, but he also has a deep understanding of the needs of the business owners, thanks to his well-rounded experience in the private sector. He is proud to be both a Davis Dart and a Weber State University Wildcat, with training in accounting and business relation skills that served him well as he supports local businesses and economic development efforts. In addition to his work, John has worn many hats over the years. Small business owner, retail general manager, and for more than two decades, he has held leadership roles in hospitality and sales management. Beyond his professional accomplishments, John has, and his wife have, two children and four grandchildren. Additionally, John is proud to be carrying on a family tradition of service to Santa Fe Springs. John's grandmother is the founding mayor, Betty Wilson. His father is retired fire chief, Bob Wilson. Please join me in welcoming John Wilson to our community and the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Again, yes, it's, it's very much an honor to, to be here and to serve in the shadow of my personal family giants. I've been in Santa Fe Springs my whole life. I've ridden in the parades and waved my hands next to Betty. My kids and grandkids have their fingerprints in various art projects around the city. And I see the vision that Betty had for the, the way this little unique community in LA County would grow. And she was proud that she was a citizen, but I think she was really proud of the fact that we had so much business that came from here to the rest of the world and things that couldn't have happened if they didn't start here in Santa Fe Springs. It'll be my job to hopefully continue that legacy, to follow the direction of the, the council that you guys provide as well as our board. And so I'm proud to be able to be here to support that vision. Thank you for your time.
John, I can tell you your grandma's up there looking down at you. Big smile on her face right now.
Yeah, I can too.
City clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to call upon Lee Squire.
Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, US Army, death before dishonor, auditor and fraud examiner. Mayor and city council. Number one, Memorial Day event, nothing but awesome and way to go. And we, on that day, we honored the fallen. I also want it noted that on that same day, Bastards Canteen in Downey held a Memorial Day event. Army Specialist Paul T. Nakamura was to have been honored by his Gold Star parents and unfortunately, they were unable to attend. However, Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco had in memoriam for the Gold Star parents, for the Nakamoras. She gave it to me. I gave this to Gus Hernandez and who in turn gave it to the Nakamora family and they actually had that memorandum, the memoriam in their possession tonight. The second item is Central Basin Municipal Water District. One, obstruction of investigation into Campstone Partners Group, Inc., and including Daltara Real Estate Services, Inc. I brought this to the attention and there's a letter written by the attorneys that the board members never saw. Number two, West Basin Municipal Water District was the subject of a lawsuit involving standby charged property tax revenues. There was a settlement that was entered into and the defending legal counsel was Amlo Law Firm. A similar charge is also being charged to we, Central Basin, called standby charged revenues, and I just want to know if those are in violation of Proposition 218. I continue to plan to look into this. I will also be confronting the city of Downey next week for a similar issue involving these standby charges. Finally, God bless Israel, God bless America, God bless the military and its veterans, and God bless law enforcement. I have a copy of the letter and a copy of the agreement with Central Basin I want to present as part of the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Okay, no more speakers. At this time, I will close public comments and move on to the next item. Mr. Bobadilla, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, Mayor. We have staff communication from our police services director, Arlene Salazar.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity. Before I go into what I wanted to say, I also want to acknowledge our friends from the county, Clifton Trotter, Camila Vicencio. They're here representing Homeless Initiative as part of the local solutions fund. Hopefully, the council will approve that. So I appreciate them coming out today to support this effort. On behalf of the city of Santa Fe Springs, I'd like to invite our community to the low-cost pet vaccination clinic that will be hosted this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Soaring Dreams Plaza. So we include pet giveaways, similar to what we did over at August Velasco Center. We'll have obstacle courses, we'll have rabies vaccines, and we'll be there from 9:00 to 11:00. And the other thing we'd like to also be promoting that day is some of the initiatives that the city council has requested, which is going to be promoting the cat and dog neuter, spay and neuter program. And so we'll be introducing those programs out and that's this Saturday at the Soaring Plaza. Be able to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Arlene.
Thank you, Arlene. Are there any other communications?
That's all we got tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have the housing successor, successor agency and city council consent calendar. We have a total of seven consent items at numbers three through nine, but before I ask for a motion, I need to talk to, call upon the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. With respect to item number six, I just want to give the members of the city council and the community a little bit of background. So the item before you is an amendment of the employment agreement between the city manager and the city of Santa Fe Springs. By way of background, on May 20th and 22nd of this year, you will recall that you conducted a performance review of the city manager, which you're required to do on an annual basis. You agreed that the city manager successfully accomplished the goals established by this body concerning, among other things, the city's internal operations, finance, development, and modernization of its IT department. In recognition of the city manager's exemplary performance review, you agreed that the city manager had earned a salary increase and additional benefits, which are as follows: a 14% salary increase, which equates to $359,000, 208 hours of vacation for the first year with adjustments thereafter, and the same benefits and COLA as provided to executive management team members. I do want to note, because I think this is important, that you did not agree to these changes without doing your due diligence. You retained an expert in city manager compensation and benefits who opined that the city manager's proposed salary and benefits are commensurate with other similarly situated city managers within Los Angeles County. The amendment before you incorporates the changes to the city manager's contract you directed me to prepare and is before you for your approval and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. At this time, do I have a motion or approval of the consent calendar?
No move.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Mora, do you have any?
None at this time, Mayor.
Councilmember Martin?
None tonight, sir.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
None tonight.
And I have none. Council comments, AB 1234, council conference reporting. Councilmember Mora?
Got a little bit of a list here, so bear with me. Congratulations to the Women's Club. That's an incredible feat and my gosh, you swept it. So congratulations and thank you for representing our city and what you do for, for our community. And I, Mr. Lee Squire, I agree with you. Memorial Day was incredible. I know that there could be more comments on that, but it was really truly a tribute to our, to our heroes. So thank you for participating in that. I attended the Dia de los Niños at the library, which was actually kind of cool. We had a Grammy or I think it was Emmy award-winning Lucky Diaz and Miral Ortega, children's author. And that was actually quite a fun evening. There was a lot of kids there, so it was a lot of fun. And also I want to apologize to our fire department. April 26th, you guys had a pancake breakfast and going back to my notes, it was never acknowledged. It was raining and people showed up and it was awesome. So, and it was sold out. You guys ran out of pancakes, so please let firefighters know that it was awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I think they went from pancakes to, what'd you call them?
Silver dollar crepes.
Crepes. Yeah, they went from pancakes to crepes.
No, it was incredible, yeah. Thank you. Metro Little League closing ceremonies are this Saturday. I would love to attend, but my wife will kill me. That's my 27-year anniversary, so I can't, I can't go. She's been putting up with me for too long. Also, our budget workshop, you know, excellent strides. Everybody can see exactly where our money is going, what we're doing with it. We have some work to do in water, as you know, our finance director had pointed out, but we're definitely going to be working on that. Summer's going to be busy, so watch out, stay tuned, lots of stuff coming. Kathy, where's she going?
She's hiding.
Oh, okay, there you are. Thank you for your service. We appreciate everything and it was a pleasure and honor working alongside with you. And John, welcome. It's going to be a great working with you. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. John? Councilmember Martin?
Trying to see what you've covered, which side not covered. Yeah, just reiterate there, our budget meetings were great. Julio, you guys did an awesome job. I don't know where he's at anymore. Great, even with all the staff, we actually ended it with the all, one meeting short. We didn't have to continue with another meeting. So that's awesome. Memorial Day, like Lee said, that thing, the whole event was awesome. It gets better. You know, the second year that we did it that way and it is awesome, awesome. Something that last week, Arlene unit mentioned, but great job with you and your staff, the Conservation Corps. They came in and did a lot of cleaning up and they did it for free. And these kids were so excited to go pick up trash. They were so, so excited to get out there and clean and clean up encampments and they're so, I mean, just to see how excited they were, it's like, it's, it's great and they want to do it again. So thank you for arranging that. Kathy, again, this is, I can't say former, former Kathy, you know, CEO, it's like, it's hard. It's, you're Kathy Fink. It's Kathy Fink in chamber. You know you're going to still be around. You're not going to leave. You're going to stick around. Mr. Wilson, it's going to be hard calling you Mr. Wilson because I was used to your dad, Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Wilson. So, so welcome to the family. I mean, you're already here, but you're back, full circle. Women's Club, that's so impressive. I mean, every year you guys get bigger and better and the things that you guys do, it's been happening for years and it just, it's about time, you know, you guys got recognized. So that's awesome. What else? CHP on Thursday, if you guys see a bunch of uniform people, guys running, it's CHP. They're actually doing... they're actually doing their Special Olympic Torch Run on Thursday afternoon. I think Whittier did it a couple days ago, and so now CHP's going to be doing it Thursday, so if you guys see them, please stay out of their way. Another thing, please, 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 pray for the Baldwin Park family, the PD officer. He has two kids that will not have a dad coming home to them every day. So, Whittier PD, thank you for your service. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone, and I wanted to say, Kathy, it was a long ride, and you did a great job, so congratulations. Your retirement is on the way. And John Wilson, it's going to be a pleasure, you're going to love this city, I mean, obviously you already do, and congratulations. And also, I'd like to say the Memorial Day, beautiful event, I was just so happy to be there, it was such an honor to have all the speakers and all of our residents over there. Pancake breakfast was very nice. And firefighters, your pancake breakfast, I can't believe we didn't say it, because that was just so nice, what you put on. It was a great turnout as well. John, happy anniversary. I hope you have a great time. Thank you to all our staff for the budget meeting. I know it can't be easy, and then sitting through all of the budget, you know, some of us were really tired, and, you know, we pulled it off, though, we pushed through. And Women's Club, congratulations. When you're in the Women's Club, you know, what I try to do too, as a Women's Club member, is to make sure that all of our women, and everything that we do, is done with love and respect for everybody in the club. Respect for everybody in the club. Do not turn down any member that wants to be in the club. Do not push people out of that club, but to love and respect and honor, and just give people a chance, because we're all human. So, that's what I have to say to all of our Women's Club members. And tomorrow, we have our volunteer dinner, and I'm just so excited to see everybody there. That's what it's all about, volunteering, giving back to our community, and having fun with each other. And again, you know, just saying hi to each other, giving each other a smile, and always remember that somebody out there may have a bad day, you'd never know, so just treat everybody with respect. And that's what I have to say, and have a great evening, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora.
I'm going to actually mention something that John probably forgot to mention, but I know he was there too. Santa Fe High School, doing the, what is it, their senior projects? So, yeah, so...
I'm going to cut you off. We have a lot of talented high schoolers.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I left that out, but yeah.
In sitting in one of the sessions, I mean, I know that when the, you know, we've had girls from the Santa Fe Springs, Miss Santa Fe Springs, talk about mental health, and, you know, and when people talk about it, but when you see a child, or when you see a teenager talk about it, and it's part of their project, and you see how much work and effort they put in to that, I mean, it's just great to see. And I'm hoping one day, I mean, the young lady who presented, that we could have her present to maybe not only our youth, or, you know, even to present to us. I mean, I think she did a remarkable job, just from seeing her as being a student athlete, to being a, you know, just that student, and just giving her presentation, and talking about mental health. I mean, people just don't realize that, you know, that the struggles that people go through every day, you know, and when you have, you know, something to belong to, like, you know, the Women's Club, you have a, you know, a belonging, you know, firefighter, you know, police, you know, chamber. It's awesome, because you have that family unity, and, but when, imagine, there's a lot of individuals who struggle, and, you know, they struggle with that mental health, and they struggle when they're alone, and, you know, but we all know that, you know, we're not alone, because God will never leave us nor forsake us, so that's always the best thing, that we can always count on Jesus Christ to always be there for us, so. Thank you, Women's Club, for all that you do. You know, Kathy Fink, thank you. Mr. Wilson, welcome, you know, and I know that we all do our part to go to so many different things, and, you know, we do forget what we attend, and tomorrow, I know it's the volunteer recognition, I won't be able to be there, because I have a, you know, Council of Governance meeting over there in Paramount, and I have to attend that, and I think they're doing something special for my little brother tomorrow, so sad is to me that I can't be there, but no matter what, I know I have to do my part, like all of us up here, we all have to make that sacrifice, and it just, you know, I'm glad Juanita brought up about the Baldwin Park officer, because, you know, these individuals, you know, day in and day out, you know, they don't know what's going to happen, that, you know, at any moment, somebody can just, you know, just, whether it be a slip of rage, or a slip of just wanting to do something different, or anything can happen, and it's just sad to see that in one instant, somebody can change someone's whole life, and it can happen to any of us. You know, Cindy Jarvis, you know, mentioned somebody who was just, you know, guarding, and from one moment to the next, somebody may not be in your life. So, always be loving, and always be respectful, in the sense of just knowing that that person may not be there tomorrow. I mean, Delia, we saw your family here, and it was just awesome to see everybody, you know what I mean? And it just shows, you know, I'm not saying that you're more well-loved than everyone else, I mean, I just think, I just think, I just think she holds a firmer hand, because if her kids don't show up, I mean, they know, she's, yeah, they know they're going to pay the consequences, so, I mean, even though, you know, so, but with all of that being said, I mean, I just want to thank you all. To Mr. Bobadilla, you know, the things that he left out, I mean, you guys have to understand that the last couple years before he got here, you know, the only grants that we ever received were probably through library and fire, you know, I think that was it. And, you know, when he got here, all of a sudden, we started receiving just an excess amount of grants that we can utilize for our community. I think we're at, I don't want to tip it, but is it like 13 million, or what'd you say?
A lot.
Right, 13. So, grant-wise, we're about roughly, and I don't want to shortchange him, but 13 million dollars? In grants, is that correct, or over 13, or roughly?
It's around the ballpark, but I want to say, we have an amazing staff, they do an amazing job for us, and, you know, a lot of times I get the credit, but staff, the staff that we have here is fantastic, do an amazing job, and I'm blessed of the support from the council, I thank you. But I also can't be reminisce that I can't do what I do without my staff, so, thank you.
Leave Dick alone, because then he's going to get his head all big over here. Right, Arlene? Yeah, all right. So, when you see all these things, understand that, you know, the homework that goes behind it, and, you know, and it's, you know, well-deserved, you know, I think on all our part, everybody understands that, so just want to explain that, that there's a lot of things that, you know, of course, our city attorney couldn't mention on the things that he's done, and where we're at. I mean, I remember when Renee first got here, I used to tell him, you know, when it came to our technology, we're living with the Flintstones, and I want to live with Jetsons at least, you know, so, and things are changing, so our budget, and, you know, having Julio Morales here for years, I mean, I've been around this individual, out and about, you know, at different conferences, and I know Juanita's met him too, and, you know, so, it's just, when you go to these places, you meet these type of individuals, and you hear them speak, and they're doing presentations, but then all of a sudden, when we have our budget sessions, I think it made it easier. You know what I mean? The only hiccup they had was, they couldn't account for $3 million on a slide, and you should have seen Julio's face, like, he pointed to the screen, and it wasn't there, and he's like, what happened? And you should have seen, you know, this young lady over here, sitting in the front row, you know, taking notes right now, she got up and just like, I thought she got fired on the spot. You know what I mean? It was pretty, I hope you did, and I'm glad you're still here, but you know what I mean? And it was just amazing, just to see the level of intensity, where they just rose to the occasion, went, hey, what happened? Next thing you know, they're just photocopying all of, you know, and we're like, man, we don't need all these photocopies, because we're not going to keep them, you know, because I think we have too many, you know, so, it just, if you see how the staff works, it's a different character. And I just want to thank everybody and all our staff, you know, and all our department heads, just what you guys do, because I know, you know, it's not Renee, I know he's not going to take the credit, you know, but it's all of you guys that helped him to be a better person, you know, whether it be, you know, Priscilla and Jasmine, you know, to keep him in line, and, you know, so if you guys need anything...
Especially Priscilla.
Yeah. Mr. Wilson, that's the gatekeeper right there, the young lady in the middle, that's Priscilla Moreno. If you need to meet with Renee, if you have any questions, scheduling, that's the person you have to talk to. Good luck with that, you know, I would take that name down and make sure, but other than that, you know, I just want to wish you guys a good night. Memorial Day services was amazing. I mean, we truly hit it out of the ballpark, and I know every year, we just keep getting better, so, may God bless, you know, the city of Santa Fe Springs, and may God always bless you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, but I do have to compliment you on one thing. Usually, when you talk about budgets and workshops, you don't get laughs and smiles, so that was a good thing. And that just shows you what kind of a council we have up here. We've always said we're a unique city, we're a unique council, and we are. You know, we're a small community, but we're mighty, and we just, we love each other, and we just are working well together with everybody, from Renee, the staff, everybody down, and the Chamber of Commerce. Annette, as we said, we all attend different functions, and we all can't make all of them all the time, but when we go, we don't represent ourselves, we represent the city. So, if we're not there, that doesn't mean that we don't care, we just, we do have families, we have anniversaries, we have birthdays and stuff like that, so we can't make everything. But we attended, Annette and I attended the Santa Fe High Awards Night, where the students, and John was there, and we, the students that got the different, the three scholarships from the city council, and it was great giving them out. Maribel Garcia, she presented them, we there, we spoke a little bit, and then the Women's Club was there, they gave out their scholarships and their acknowledgements on the money and stuff, so I want to give you guys credit for that, and your awards that you got, well-deserved. Memorial Day event, Lee, you hit it right on the nail, awesome. Again, it was above and beyond. So glad we're able to do that. Budget workshops, you know, we have a very healthy budget, and we're proud to say that, we're proud to present it, and it's because, again, our staff, our city manager, and all of us working together to make that happen. Kathy Fink, congratulations. Again, like Juanita said, you're part, you're Santa Fe Springs Chamber, what can I say? And Dawn, John, I don't want to take anything away from you, I didn't intentionally not introduce you at the beginning, because I was told not to take Carlos's thunder and introduce you at the middle, so I was going to introduce you, but they said don't, so, but thank you for that, and I'm sure...
DJ Carlos.
DJ Carlos, yes. Next time, he has to bring a turntable with him. But I don't know this to be fact, but I'm guessing, when your grandmother was here, the Women's Club was started probably right around then, because I know my, the neighbor woman that lived across the street, she was in the first Women's Club, so that's how long that this has been going on. And it's just a great club, a lot of women have come and gone, and, but you know what, it's for the, they're representing our city, and they're doing a very good job of it. So, thank you for that. And so, I'm going to close the meeting, and it's not just for the Baldwin Park officer who gave the ultimate sacrifice, but this is for all law enforcement and their families, so, meeting adjourned.